All right, the city, Bothell City Council is now back in session. We are going to open up our visitors' section. It's going to be one hour long. There'll be a visitor's section next week as well if we don't have enough time for tonight. During the public comment period, these lights, and there's also lights on the podium. They come on. When the orange light comes on, you have one minute left. And when the red light comes on, your three minutes are up. And so please wrap up your comments or else I'll interrupt you and ask you to please summarize your comments or finish your comments. During public comment, please address the council as a whole. If you have questions for council, well, I'll get to that in just a second. If there's a question from the dais, please do not answer it until I have an opportunity to determine whether it should be answered or not. We've been operating that way since the beginning of the year. And the purpose of it is to actually protect people at the podium from interrogation by council members. So with that, I have a written statement here that the legal department of the city gave me to read. So I'm going to read that. And then I also have just a quick statement that I wrote afterwards that I'm going to, you'll notice the difference. But here we go. Prior to today's study session, I contacted the city's legal department regarding the recent removal of former city manager, Robert Stowe. The legal department has confirmed that the process that council followed complied with requirements of RCW 35A 13130 and RCW 35A 13140, thus making the council's action legal. While we welcome your comments this evening, please note that the council will not be responding to questions at this time. But I do want to take this opportunity to clarify one portion of the resolution. Council's statement about moving in a new direction was limited solely to the leadership of the city. Council remains committed to the economic development and growth that we have seen here in the city. Mr. Stowe's contract contained two reasons for termination common in most such contracts: termination for cause, which is used when misconduct or malfeasance is involved, or termination not for cause, used when the council elects to terminate the manager for any reason other than cause. Mr. Stowe's termination was not for cause. The council decided to release Mr. Stowe so that we could find a person with the leadership style more consistent with the leadership expectations of the current council. His 11-year run with the city is quite unusual, as most city managers transition every four to six years, but we remain appreciative of his efforts during his tenure and wish him all the best in his future endeavors. So I just wanted to add one last thing, that our community has been odds itself for decades before any of us were on council. During transition is a good opportunity to work with each other to realize the adopted vision statement within our comprehensive plan of the city. And I'm just going to read it verbatim. The people of Bothell hereby set forth and pledge our commitment to achieve a common vision for the future of the Bothell community. So that's the end of my comments. And I have some sign-up sheets up here. I would imagine there's more. If you have a yellow sign-up sheet, please bring them over to the clerk, and we'll have them handed down here, and I will read off your names. The first person is Shawna Pitts.
Good evening, council members. I'm Shawna Pitts, general manager, country and in suites. But tonight, I'm here on behalf, I'm also the chair of the Greater Bothell Chamber of Commerce, so I am representing our chamber tonight. We represent nearly 300 local business owners and operators, and we have so far been asked many questions, and many have shared their concerns with us on what this new direction would be for the city and how it may affect their businesses. I'm glad to hear you've kind of clarified that. However, we would like to offer and work with the city council to communicate this new direction or new vision or support the comments that you just stated right then and there about reading that statement of what Bothell's vision is as it relates into our business community. As such, we'd like to work with you to understand what new directions might be given, share the questions that have been asked of us, and help shape the future of our business community. As an example, many questions that have come up recently. Who is managing the process of the current proposed projects? What is the status of those projects? Will they continue? How does this affect being street projects and any other that are currently being proposed? These are just a few of many, many questions that we've heard from our business community. Given our role in the community, we'd like to know who our point of contact or liaison might be to help answer these questions and work with city council. This is why our chamber exists. It is to be an ally to the city and help our businesses prosper. At this time, we ask, who would you like us to work with and who can be our point of contact? Thank you.
Assistance C manager, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, thank you, Shaw. I've reached out to each of the people with whom the city has negotiated personnel purchase and sale agreements, and you're welcome to use me as your point of contact until we have an interim city manager. And even beyond that as well, I'll continue to be involved.
Great. Thank you for your time.
All right, next person is David Habelitz.
Well, council, I'm kind of, my head is swimming from all of the statistics and information that we've gotten so far this evening. I'm going to kind of go off-topic a little bit because there's a surprise opportunity for me to do this, and that I'm going to say, you're welcome for having free access to the carpool lanes on weekends, nights, and holidays.[393.62][393.62](Laughter). And if you haven't signed it yet, stop405tolls.org, and we continue to work to get the rest of this straightened out so we get real solutions, which kind of segues into what I had to talk about this evening. And I think because of time and the amount of information that you were given this evening, I'm going to make it a point to set up an opportunity to meet each, with each of you during your office hours, so that I can kind of go over this and talk about my concerns and things. But just to cover a few points specifically, there are three sections that I've outlined from the ST3 plan. If we look at the BRT program that they're putting on 405, and this is relevant, and we need to look at it as a whole system, but that they are looking at spending $735 million to put BRT on 405 from end to end, which is a deal. If you look at the nine-mile section of putting light rail between Bellevue and Issaquah, that's going to cost $1.7 billion for a total cost of $190 million per mile. And then the segment that is a 3.7-mile segment of light rail, that will cost, I might have said this wrong, it's $1.1 billion to create a 3.7-mile segment of light rail in Redmond for a total cost of $300 million per mile. Back to the BRT, that was less than $20 million per mile. So BRT is what we should be advocating, because the initial cost is significantly lower, in the order of magnitude actually there. And then the maintenance that, as you were being asked, I think earlier, you were asking that, what is the maintenance on this? And the maintenance prices are also commensurately more expensive. Along with that, for the $50 billion that this is going to cost us, that works out to, there are 3 million people in the district that they're talking about, the region, that works out to $16,700 for everyone in this room, each of you, $16,700 to pay for ST3. That buys you the light rail that doesn't serve any purpose anywhere close to what the BRT will serve. With that in mind, keep in mind what this provides, and this provides, yellow light, this provides ridership for somewhere around 11,000 to 13,000 trips per day on 405. And you were quoted 25%, and it's actually 3% for the overall system. More later.
Thank you, sir, for coming in. Next person is Steve Booth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Some of my fellow citizens in Bothell have expressed concern regarding last week's surprise termination of Bob Stowe as our city manager. I'd like to look at two aspects of this action. First, why was it done? And then how was it done? Does this action really represent the very best of Bothell and our values? To the first question of why was this action taken, and I recognize the mayor's made some statements that perhaps address some of my questions coming in, but I'm going to ask the questions anyway. These were some of the questions that I asked, and I believe others in this room were asking as well. Did Bob Stowe break any laws, violate any legal process? No. Was there a breach of ethics? None that I've heard. Was there any type of personal or professional conduct? I understand, it was, you're saying it was without cause. Then why the decision? What I'd heard was there was a time for change in direction. And I know you've addressed that now, that there was a direction as far as the city manager is concerned, but not as far as the city. But I, for one, found it quite troubling and confusing as to which direction, which direction the city was really headed. I recognize that with the recent election with two added new city members of the city council, there's a new majority which seeks to emphasize environmental concerns and preservation of open space to draw more into balance with development. This implies that Bothell perhaps has become too focused on development and that Bob was part of this so-called problem. Let me be one who counts himself as honoring the work done by Bothell citizens over 10 years ago in creating a vision for our downtown, which is now evolving to other parts of our city. Bob was the key leader in the consensus creation of this vision and its implementation. He built a fantastic leadership team. Thank you. I saw him as a talented spokesperson to those considering moving to or considering investing in Bothell. Does his termination signal a change in strategic direction? If yes, what is that change? As you can see, I'm not satisfied with what I've heard as to why Bob was terminated. I now turn to my second question, and that is, how was it done? Was a surprise resolution and vote at last week's meeting with no prior warning to the public, from the best I can tell, to anyone, the necessary and proper way to do this? Was it discussed with the city attorney beforehand? What is the best process for Bothell to make a change in its city manager? And is there an opportunity for us to have a public debate about the city manager, his staff, some actual metrics as to how they've performed? Let's have this be opened up to the light of day and have it be a transparent process. Is this how we treat one who invests his career, passion, and expertise in Bothell, particularly a person who's conducted himself so professionally for the duration of his time with us?
Please drop off your comments.
As you can tell, I'm not satisfied with what I've heard as to how Bob Stowe was terminated
Next is Alyssa Anderson.
All right, well, good evening. My name is Alyssa Anderson, and I think it's wonderful, so many of us are here tonight. And this representative group of Bothell citizens should have been here last week, quite honestly. I was very disappointed and shocked to hear the news that the direction that has brought such vibrancy and economy to Bothell, and I live really close to downtown, and I love just seeing the thriving, you know, community that's assembled in places that were formerly dead. And I think we do owe a debt of gratitude to Bob Stowe for his leadership and his vision. And I was very disappointed, not only in how he was terminated, but that this was not an item that was even on the agenda, because I think we all would have rallied to, at least here, what the council had to say about the direction and that they were, you know, there was nothing negative brought up about Bob. It was just simply without cause, because we want to go in a new direction. So we felt very slighted that we were not a part of that decision-making process in an era where the council ran and some of the new members ran on being transparent and open and wanting to hear from the public. This was just very disappointing. And I think council member Freed and Spivey just asked for a month, just wanted to slow down the process. I don't know, my mom always told me, you make terrible decisions when you're rushed into it. And I think that's exactly what happened. A decision was rushed into, or there was some collusion that went on with that gang of five that voted to terminate Bob Stowe without cause, simply to go in a new direction. And quite honestly, if the survey showed that 85% of Bothell residents appreciate the direction that the city's going in, as far as I'm concerned, that majority now represents the 15%, and I was disappointed that this happened.
Next person is Dennis Pearl. Dennis Pearl.
Sorry, that's Dennis Pierce.
Sorry.
My handwriting, it's okay. Council, I'm also among those who was very disappointed in the direction that apparently we're heading in now. I've attended many council, or excuse me, many of the chamber meetings and been very impressed by the direction and the results we've gotten from Bob Stowe. Felt that he's been an advocate for our community as a realtor in our local community. It's pertinent to me, because our home values and the investments that all of us are making are based on having a vibrant community. And I would really like to see some, I like to see you share with us what that vision is. We're going in a new direction. For me, any direction going away from the positive, which is, I believe, most of us believe we've been going in a very positive direction, I'd like to hear what it is that is going to be either so much better or that is going to be of value to our community. We've got fabulous parks, okay? We're getting better. We've got a fantastic downtown that's getting better. We've had a vision that I think most of us have shared as business people that is significantly improving over where we've been. And to say we're going in a new direction, I think, is very disconcerting for most of us as business people. And I think you owe us a vision that is actually up to where we've been headed. So I'd like you to share that with us. Thank you.[1007.93][1007.93](Applause).
Next is Roz Cork.
I won't take much of your time tonight, but the firing of our esteemed and nationally-recognized city manager this past week did require me to come down and speak in person. I actually cried when I heard the news. I cried for my city and I cried for Bob Stowe. I could speak here to the lack of public notice or input, or the lack of open council discussion, or the fact that it was mentioned or motioned for, discussed, and decided in one night, actually about 10 minutes, it seemed like, or to the sudden and humiliating way the firing was executed, even going so far as to insist on a police escort for Bob as he gathered his things, or to the mysterious change in the direction identified as the reason for said firing. But I'd like to focus tonight on the man. I've only shared a conversation or two with Bob Stowe, but he's earned my respect. He earned my respect as I listened to his speeches and as I listened to his comments and discussion in meetings. He earned it as I read his reports. He earned my respect because of the team of high-quality leaders he gathered around him. He earned it as he cast a brave, enormous vision for the city. He earned my respect because of his actions. He did what he said he'd do for us here in Bothell. He did it against crazy odds, even in an economic downturn, and while a fair bit of chaos ensued around him. He stayed when it was hard and messy, and when the task ahead had to have looked impossible. It's remarkable, really, but he loyally stayed with our community, because that's the kind of person he's demonstrated to all of us that he is. In my opinion, the man deserved a party, or a parade down Main Street culminating at McMinnaman's with food and drinks and all his friends and colleagues around congratulating him. But instead, we fired him without cause, while on vacation and unable to even respond. We let one of the best things going for Bothell go, in a degrading manner, unworthy of the person. I am shaking my head, because I can't imagine what change in direction necessitates this. I have no idea what that change looks like. I just know that this change, the change the community has been working toward for years, is finally unfolding in front of us, and it's beautiful. I know it's bumpy, like everybody is and everything is, but it is beautiful to see. So Bob, if you hear this tonight, the truth is, none of our words individually, or when all added up collectively, can ever thank you enough for what you've done for the city and for us as a community. And I just want to thank you and apologize.
Next is Ben Wiselogo.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Ben Wiselogo, and I'm a six-year veteran in the United States Navy, with two deployments to the Mediterranean, North Africa, and the Middle East. One of the best lessons that we learned in the military is to subjugate our personal feelings and desires for the good of the organization and mission that we serve. That is what great leadership looks like. The decision to fire Bob Stowe in the fashion that you did seems to be based on personal grievances and with no clear path forward to either preserve the gains that his team earned, or thoughts on where the city will go next. At the very least, it would have seemed prudent to engage in some sort of well-thought-out turnover process so the institutional memory and relationship to Bob's 11 years of exemplary leadership could have been preserved. I can see none of this in your decision-making processes. Between the military and Hadian University, every time that I've returned to the city that I grew up in, I've been continually impressed and proud of how Bothell has grown and developed our Bob Stowe tireless leadership. To terminate his employment in such an opaque and cold way is not okay, and I can't let this go without making my complaints heard. Bob is a dedicated, nationally-recognized public servant and deserves better than this. Further, from my experience, from my perspective, you seem to be violating the one inviolable rule of leadership, which is the premium putting the needs of one's organizations above one's own. As a veteran and current Bothell resident, your decision seems small, and you need to be made aware that your actions seem not to be honorable or in the best interests of our city. This is how community breaks down and the discourse turns negative when the common citizen believes that their voice is not heard. I ask you to rescind the firing of Bob Stowe at the next council meeting for the good of the community. Please pause, give yourselves time to think this major decision through, and do what's best for our city together. Please honor your commitment to transparent governance. I thank you for your service to our community, and if you all have my contact information, please feel free to reach out, and I will continue this conversation at our mutual convenience.
Next is Jeff Thomas.
First thing, the top of the fourth inning, the Mariners are up by a run. I own Crossroads Sign along with my wife, which was a Bothell business when it was established in 2002. We left Bothell in 2009, so I have a little different perspective than many of the people here. We came back in 2015 largely because of the renaissance that Bothell's been going through the last few years. Because we're in the sign business, we build and install signs in almost every municipality and in three counties throughout the Puget Sound area. And I used to brag about Bothell, because I was aware of the public officials that were elected, the staff, and the business community, particularly the chamber, that were all on the same page. That's not the case in several other communities very close to you. So from that perspective, I was not only shocked and saddened by the news last week, I don't think anybody questions the authority you have to make the decision you did. But the overriding thing in everybody's mind tonight, those that are viewing, those that are going to read, those citizens that couldn't make it here tonight, is simply, what are you guys doing? Bob represented the very best of Bothell. I was lucky enough to serve on a committee through the chamber with him and got to know Bob, Pete, and several other people in the city here. We were the company that made the park signs several years ago for all the Bothell city parks. So our hearts are invested in Bothell. But last week's decision make me wonder what is coming next for the city. So please address that as quickly as you can, not just the rationale, but what it is that's coming next for the city and the citizens in this area.[1451.63][1451.63](Applause).
Next is Lee Henderson. And this is the last sign-up sheet I have, so if you do have one, you can give it to the city clerk.
My name is Lee Henderson, and I, as most of you know, because I've reached out to all of you, have been incredibly upset about this decision made, but I've decided to take the high road tonight, and I'm going to read a letter that Bill Wiselogo wrote, because he wasn't able to be here. And I'm doing this because I have such honor for Bob Stowe. And so this is the letter. What is Bothell lose with Bob Stowe's departure? Bothell loses a city manager who wholeheartedly embraced the community's plan for downtown as his personal marching orders, and has dedicated himself completely to accomplishing the thousands of tasks necessary to bring the citizens' vision to reality. Bothell loses a city manager who has tirelessly promoted the community's downtown dreams to developers nationwide, and who has negotiated passionately on behalf of Bothell citizens to make sure developers provide the buildings and services that best realize those dreams. They lose a city manager who investors have respect, trust, and confidence that a decision to invest in our city will benefit them as it benefits the entire community. We lose a city manager who doggedly pursued implementation of the community's will through the worst economic recession since the Great Depression, painstakingly moving the downtown revitalization ever forward through a combination of adaptation to changing circumstances and sheer determination that the citizens' visions would not be denied. Bothell loses a city manager who understands from experience that downtown revitalization benefits the entire Bothell community in both quantifiable and unquantifiable ways, from revenues that can be used throughout the city through parks, police, fires, streets, and other services, to a feeling of local pride and belonging that promotes good citizenship. Bothell loses a city manager who, by his example, has inspired city staff members to similarly commit their time, energy, and creativity to overcome myriad of challenges so the community plan for downtown is realized. I'm getting green lights. Bothell loses a city manager who's, under whose leadership, the city's finance function has been exemplary. The budget received the government's Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award every cycle during his tenure, and the Capital Facilities Plan receiving the government's Smart Community Award. Bothell loses a city manager of integrity, passion, loyalty, and perseverance. With Bob Stowe's departure, the Bothell community loses all these things and more. What does our community gain?[1637.58][1637.58](Applause).
Next is James Barnhart.
Good evening, council. I just thought I'd come, and probably the only one in here unless anybody else is on my side and would like to speak up. If I were Bob Stowe, I'd stick around too, if I was making $188,000 a year. Took about roughly $70,000 from the taxpayers to get his master's degree. I've talked to different council members over the recent years about Bob Stowe and different things in the city, and I think we had similar feelings and agreements. Maybe if you were on the other side of this city and this government, and maybe if you'd come to council meetings and had your police chief hold out her arms and stop you from coming into city council meetings, and forced you into taking the city and these council members to federal court and suing them, bringing Joe Beck to light last fall when he accosted me verbally outside a city council meeting afterwards, and after exposing that at a city council meeting, having police watch my house, do drive-bys, I could go on and on and on about some of the stuff in this city. Stowe had more power than you people could ever understand, and he serves at the behest of the people, and the people are our council members, they represent us. So they had every right to do what they did, and I was really starting to wonder if maybe you were going to not follow through with some of the things that you've said, and I'm just glad you did it. Thank you. I appreciate it. And that's for my family, too.
Next is Troy Anderson.
I'm here today to speak about transparency. Seattle Times editorial originally published July 15, 2015, titled, "The Times Recommends James McNeil, Andy Raehum, Davina Dewer for Bothell City Council." An expert from the editorial, the writer, is quoted as saying, An expert from the editorial, the writer, is quoted as saying, "McNeil is the best candidate in this race because of his leadership, experience as a construction manager, and advocacy for Bothell locally and with other jurisdictions recruiting to preserve the open space. Those attributes and his commitment to Bothell make Bothell a more transparent and careful steward of its assets outweigh concerns about his past legal troubles, including a DUI and tax payment problems when his small business failed before the recession. If elected, McNeil should work to ensure that he represents all quarters of Bothell." The editorial goes on to say, "When controversy erupted over the sale of the golf courses back nine to the mayor for a housing project, Raehum aligned with one Bothell group that successfully fought to preserve the open space. Raehum says the city handled the deal poorly and regrets not questioning staff guidance to the council at the time. It was a crass course in the importance of transparency and independence." The editorial continues by having, or excuse me, by saying, "In the race for position number six, Davina Dewer is the best choice for the council that needs to rebuild trust, increase transparency, and manage growth." Another article published in the Bothell Reporter on October 1, 2015 quotes then-candidate Dewer saying, "I think transparency is the root of democracy. If you don't believe that your government is being transparent with you, then you don't have a relationship, and if you don't have a relationship, then there's no point to communication." On Councilmember Sandberg's website, in the section under "What I Stand For Regarding Council Responsiveness to Citizen Input," she states in 2014 that "The current council and city leadership equate short meetings and fast decisions with efficient and effective government." She says, "I disagree, as I have in the past and will work to bring more voices to the table so that multiple perspectives influence important decisions. I believe that and consider that firing, the firing of the city manager is an important decision." Councilmember Sandberg didn't even speak to her motion when she was asked to by the mayor at the last meeting. I don't believe this represents transparency in our elected council members and that support the firing of city manager Bob Stowe. I believe Bob should be honored for his contribution. His vision has made each and every one of us get to reap the benefits in our great city. I believe this decision potentially could cast doubt in the minds of investors and business owners."
Mr. Anderson, could you please wrap up?
I'm done.
Oh, you are? Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
So that's the end of our comment period. Oh, nope, we have one more. Next is Jay Pat Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm James Patrick Thompson, and I'm the staff representative for the City of Bothell employees. I've been honored to serve in that position since 1992. I'm here tonight to speak to the street and sidewalk levy that you're going to be discussing in study session in a few moments. Certainly don't envy the position that you, you as a council, find yourself in. Declining state revenue and for support of local government has been a real issue and has created crises throughout the state. I know that. I lobby on behalf of our union in Olympia for funding for local levy issues. Prioritizing ballot levies is a complicated process, and the risks are very great. From what we know today, a failure of the street levy bond will result in critical maintenance being left undone and significant layoffs of Public Works employees. Several of those employees are here tonight. The guys in orange as well, but can everybody from Public Works please stand up and identify yourself? Although all the measures you are considering have merit, historically, what we do know is that when the public is faced with a ballot that has multi-revenue subjects on it, they tend to be overwhelmed and they put all the, all the measures at risk of not passing. So simply put, the more issues that you have out there, the greater the odds are of them not being successful at the ballot box. So we hope you consider that in your work session tonight as far as prioritizing those issues and, and remaining with that focus. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more signup sheets. Is anybody else interested in speaking to council? Mr. Evans? Was there anybody else? Did I see another hand? Okay.
My name is Bill Evans, and I'm a resident of the City of Bothell. I hesitated to come up here tonight, but I don't think the residents, and I really wanted to speak to the residents of Bothell, of our city council. I don't think the residents of Bothell will really ever know why this occurred. I served on the council for eight years, just completed my last term in December. I can tell you that every year, the city council conducted evaluations of the city manager. That was our responsibility as a city, as the city council. We have no authority over the other employees, just the city manager. Those evaluations were mostly performed by the city council, and in some cases, they were 360-degree evaluations where members of the community were asked to have input, members of the staff were asked to have input, other leaders in the community were asked for, to have input. I can tell you that those evaluations, as a majority, came back very positive of the work that Bob had done for this city. He was very well-respected in the community, as you've heard tonight. There were one or two or three, over the eight years I was on the council, council members who didn't like what Bob was doing, didn't like the answers that they received from Bob. Even though they were the truth, it wasn't the answers that they wanted to hear, and consequently, they, he received a bad evaluation from those certain council members. I've worked in local government for over 30 years. I've worked with several city managers around the state. I can tell you that Bob Stowe was one of the best city managers in the state, if not in the Northwest region. It's a great loss that we've lost Bob in this city. It's, we've talked, we've heard a little bit about transparency tonight. It's, it's a little bit of a concern to me that there's two members on this council that have been on the council less than five months and now have evaluated our city manager or apparently taken action based on five months of service that he isn't good enough. Or they received input ahead of time that he wasn't good enough and shouldn't be city manager. I don't know. But it's, it's, and they have the right to make the decision they made, they made last week, and I wish that decision hadn't been made because I think it's a great loss to the city. And I, I hope that leadership at some point will come forth on this council from the majority that represents what this city wants. I think as a whole, the city has progressed very well. Not everyone agrees, but we've certainly tried to do the best we could in the last eight years, and Bob did a fabulous job. Thank you.
Do you want to come up? I believe that's Patty Belcey.
Normally, I would have my statement written, but I didn't plan on speaking until I heard everybody else talking. I will clear up one thing that someone mentioned about the humiliating way he was escorted out of the building. If you knew anything about business, that is normal for businesses. I, I didn't experience, but I saw somebody at the University of Washington, and they were not at the level he is, but that is normal business practice. Over the years, we have been involved with city activities for probably 15 or 16 years, and it came to our attention, at some point, it turned into a dictatorship. We tried desperately to get the city to stop building this $50 million city hall that we didn't need. We could have used part of that money for the streets and sidewalks, but the majority of the previous council thought it was worthwhile. They, last year, they did a Parks and Public Spaces or Open Spaces, which was a lie, and everybody saw through it. It took 10 of us to defeat that ballot for, I think it was $42 million. They said that they didn't have the money. Well, now they've found the money to finish the boulevard, but it was not a Parks and Open Space. It was a Parks and Road Improvement, and the majority was Road Improvement, and the citizens of Bothell saw through it. The other thing, my husband was on the planning commission for many years, and while he was on the planning commission, the plan was to upgrade the Main Street. Hello? Hello? I'm speaking to myself.
Hold on, just, uh-oh, is mine working either?
I was just going to speak about the downtown people. Okay. Anyway, when my husband was planning commission, the plan was, in my understanding, is to help the downtown merchants of Main Street improve, and I have seen none of that. It's gone off on the boulevard, which is wonderful, but I feel for the businesses on Main Street. I think they're being left behind, and I think Bob Stowe was part of that. So the $50 million city hall that Bob Stowe desperately wanted down at Bothell Landing, there was a room full of people like this, and every single person said no, and he stood up and still spoke about putting it there. So he was not listening to the people. The other thing is, this is a personnel matter, and you don't discuss personnel matters in a public situation like this. It's personnel, and it's never discussed in the public. We, the Wayne Golf Course, it was discussed in executive session, and it was not put public, and it should have been. There's a world of difference in that.
Oh, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Please, speaker, give your name at the microphone, at the microphone, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Chuck Anderson is my name, and I'm from Bothell, and I just wanted to say, I don't know if you have your vacations planned, Council, but might I suggest, oh, a couple Novembers from now, maybe? Because maybe there'll be an opportunity for the people of this city to vote you out of office while you're on vacation. I guess the frustration I have in, in this, in what I'm saying is, you let go of a man that was on vacation. Who fires somebody that's, that's on their vacation? I mean, it's just seems so heartless to me. I, I don't get that. I don't understand why that couldn't have waited, but, but it's just, it just demonstrates to, to all of us that you just had something in mind that you wanted to go do, and it's just the fact that, that the city manager's out on his vacation and you fire him. Couldn't have waited till he's back in his office, really? That's, that's all I have to say.
Going once, twice? All right. Thank you for coming in this evening. We're going to move on to AB 16-079, which is a public safety ballot measure for 2016 Council Confirmation of Street Sidewalk Fire Department Measures. And with us is Peter Trosen, Acting City Manager, as well as Chief Bob Van Horn and the Public Works Director Aaron Leinhardt.
The ballot measures that are in this agenda bill have been discussed, explained in detail with the staff report that we have. We've, we've talked about them in, in the retreat earlier this year, and we've put quite a bit of attention on them. So I'll keep my brief fairly short and turn it over to you for your questions and discussions. There are four things to note, a couple things to note. There are four measures that were originally talked about, planned, two Public Works, one Maintenance and Operations, one Capital, and then for Fire, there was also one for Maintenance and Operations and one for Capital. On the 18th of April, we had a, a Citizens Advisory Group convene in this room, and several of you were there, and you heard from the citizens who were present, some pretty, what I thought was some pretty loud and clear feedback about the inadvisability of having four ballot measures on one, in one election. So staff has looked closely at this, and, you know, I apologize for the length of the staff report and the agenda bill summary, but it's, as you've heard, it's pretty important. All of these things are pretty important. The needs, the needs are there to, to fund our Public Works Maintenance and Operations, our Fire Maintenance Operations Training. There is needs for Capital for Public Works Streets, repair sidewalks, and also for, for the Fire Department, for their capital needs. The, the recommendation is that we would move forward, my recommendation is that we would move forward with the Public Works Maintenance and Operations Levy and a Capital Levy that would go before the voters this fall. The Fire Department's needs, their non-mandatory training should be funded in the normal budget process for '17 and '18, which we will make every effort to do, and the Fire Department's capital needs, capital needs bond should be delayed until 2018, which would give, give us more time to develop cost estimates with more granularity on, on each of those items. Some current, some concerns with this approach, you know, the, the Fire Department's worried about delaying operational funding and whether we can find it in the budget, which I certainly understand that concern, and, and the concern that we all have is what if the Public Works measures don't pass this fall? Do we then advance them into the next year? Do they come back next year? There's no getting around the fact that this is a difficult decision. There, I would, I would draw your attention, for each of these ballot measures in your staff report, there's a section entitled "Impact of Ballot Measure Failure," and that's probably, if you were going to look at an area, that's probably what you would look at as most telling on the, on the future for the city. But we need to, we need to talk about this. We need to get your guidance because we have outreach and engagement to do. There's some schedules in your folders, which we inserted in there at, earlier this afternoon, and that engagement is leading up to the resolutions that we'll have to present to you in July, so that's coming up in just a couple of months. The complexity of these issues need us, need, need a lot of addressing, so we need the time to set that up, and then, of course, I'll have to remind you that it will have an impact on the '17, '18 budget process. So all of that is what caused us to bring this for you again tonight. So I stand by for your questions, as, as well as does Fire Chief Van Horn and Director Leinhardt.
Did each of you have a presentation, or is that it?
That's it. They're available for your questions. I don't know if they have, Bob, okay, Bob has something to present.
I don't want to go over the need statement, and again, good evening, Mayor and Council. The need statement has been made numerous times, and I think it's clear. And I will admit, while the Public Works issues about providing service and maintaining jobs, the Fire issues about taking the Fire Department to the level that the community deserves. I think it's good to remind us why we are discussing the Fire issues. About this time last year, I came before council, and I said, "If the regional fire authority becomes a reality, the projected cost is $1.50 per thousand. So if we take this $376,000 median home that we are talking about, it would cost taxpayers $564 a year for the regional fire authority. That's the worst-case scenario if the city had, does not, or would have not forgiven any of the taxes that were currently collected for fire." So then we started to ask ourselves, what would it be like to fully fund the department? And you've heard numerous times that it's $36 a year. So $36 a year to fully fund the department versus $564 to move to a regional fire authority. As the Acting City Manager stated, "I'm willing to take off the facility upgrades." As the Acting City Manager stated, I'm willing to take off the facility upgrades. I do believe it needs some more work. It would never pass in 2017 because it would never meet the validation rate after a presidential election this November. So, the soonest we could bring it back is in 2018. So, what I'm requesting is that Council strongly consider moving forward with a Maintenance and Operation portion, and that is $27.45. While my name's on the Agenda Bill, I didn't have an opportunity to write the Agenda Bill. And there's some wording in there, the third paragraph, that, that gives me concern. There's no promises there. There's words like, "We should determine if there will be excess revenue available after existing services are funded within the 2017 and '18 budget for the Fire Department." And then later on, it says, "If new revenue beyond the amount needed for funding existing services is available, such funding could be allocated to restore Fire Department funding to that existing prior to the Great Recession." So, what the City Manager at that time was talking about is funding it to the $170,000 level, which is about 28% of what I'm asking for. If this did happen, and that's the direction Council wanted to go, I would also ask for another $70,000 to get these mandatory department physicals for the staff. I support wholly the Public Works ballot measures. But as the Fire Chief, I have to also support, and I believe in supporting, the Fire issues. When voters go to the, to the poll, they're consumers. And to me, when I, whenever I vote, it's based on two things. One, do I recognize the need? And two, can I afford the need? And that's what the voters are going to decide. So, I've had some questions that I think, and again, the Acting City Manager brought these up, but I've got a couple more for your consideration. If the city finds funds to support the $240,000 request, is it a temporary relief for only '17 and '18? Or will that continue on in the next bienniums? What happens if the Fire ballot measures do not move forward, and voters do not support one or both of the Public Work measures? Will the Public Works needs then come back in 2017, and the Fire issues then be pushed back to 2018? What will happen if the Public Work needs are passed this year, and then Council supports moving the Fire Maintenance and Operations forward in 2017? When will voter fatigue come into play? If you cannot support the $600,000, what can you support? Could you support $500,000, $400,000, $300,000? I'm willing to be collaborative with this. But I'm asking that the voters have an opportunity to decide at what level they want their Fire Service funded. So, I respectfully, respectfully request that you consider seriously the Fire issues. Thank you.
Let's open it up for questions. Deputy Mayor.
I'm not sure this question. I did want, I was going to wait for the committee reports, but I'm, I'm going to state it now because I think it's pertinent to the conversation. At the last Snohomish County Tomorrow Meeting, they discussed a 2/10 sales tax levy that they're going to vote on in August. From the discussion there, it's supposed to be mainly for police. However, what was told to us on the committee was that for cities that do not have an RFA or contract services, that we would be able to use that for Fire Service. So, I think that's pertinent to the conversation, both in that if it passes, Snohomish County will be well over 10% sales tax, and also, we should be really seriously considering whether we should go after any sales tax at all, in, in my mind. Is this going to be my only chance to speak? Because it's not a question.
You, you can ask questions and take, take as much time as you need, and then we'll do another round if the Council wants to.
So, does anybody else have questions? Maybe I should just stop talking if the other people have questions.
Was that your only question?
Yeah. Well, it wasn't a question, so.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Councilmember Sandberg?
The Chief brought this up. On page 33 of the Agenda Packet, the, the language, "We should also determine if there will be any excess revenue available for the Fire Department." And that's to potentially meet the $170,000 bare-bones request for training and operation for the Fire Department. So, what is the anticipated source of this revenue?
Do you want to address?
It would just mean that, within the '15, '16 budget, we anticipated $1.2 million going back into reserves to reinstate the reserve levels that we had prior to the Great Recession and the aftermath of that, and keeping people employed. So, it would mean that those monies would not go into the reserve the, the way that we really need it to. But again, we have to look at the priorities. And I think we all are in agreement that that $170,000 needs to happen, and that the training needs to be up where, where it was prior to the recession. So, it would just be $170,000 left going into the reserves. And up until this point, I have not seen any time where we have reduced MNO other than through the recession period in this city. It's always went up by CPI, actually. So, that was a unique period of time that we saw that happening.
I'm sorry, can you explain the significance of that? What did you, you said that MNO has only increased by CPI?
We've reduced MNO when we were able to implement efficiencies and things that where we could reduce costs. But we have never went back, as long as I've been here, and reduced MNO based on not having the funds to maintain our MNO level. We've always increased it annually by the CPI. So, if they spent $100 on MNO, and this is in all departments, if we spent $100 on MNO one year, it's $102.5 the next year. That's usually how we prepare our budgets, based on a CPI increase for MNO.
But I, that might not, I mean, that might work for supplies in one department, but it doesn't work for necessary training for new employees in another department. So, I, I don't know if that's, if that across-the-board approach is workable long-term.
I think each department is unique, but training usually doesn't increase more than CPI either. Where we see real increases is professional contracts, such as having work done on fire trucks, that type of thing. But as far as the cost of sending somebody to a training, it really hasn't increased that much over, over time. It stays in line with, with the supplies, let's put it that way.
And so, you mentioned that we may have at the end of the biennium, $1.2 million in excess revenue that was intended to go to the reserve. How much of that money could we divert from the reserve and not impact, for example, credit ratings or other financial position in the city?
I think I just sent out a, an email with our new credit rating, or where Moody's reaffirmed our credit rating, which was, the language that was within that report was pretty complimentary of the city and the fiscal management here. So, I think the $170,000 not being put into the reserves would be a prudent move.
What about $250,000? Or $400,000?
I can tell you that in about three months.
Okay.
I need to get into June. I need to see six months of data for 2016 to really give you that, that figure.
So, I think, so next week, I think we're having a presentation, sort of like a budget intro at our meeting next week. I think that would be interesting information to think about. Also, you know, we're talking about if there's excess revenue available, you know, what are our latest REIT revenue reports? What are, you know, what are our latest revenue reports in general? How, how do they compare historically? If we're seeing a big increase in revenue, how, how can we allocate that to the needs in the various departments? So, I think that would be helpful for next week.
I will be talking about the, the quarterly report, so the year-end report for 2015. I will be going over that with the Council.
And then, so I, I understand from the, the Fire Chief that he's willing to postpone the, the Fire Station Capital Improvement Bond. If we were to do a Fire Impact Study, I know we had talked about a Fire Impact Study that we could use to set Fire Impact Fees. Is that something undergoing now? Or is that something that we would budget in the '17, '18 budget, given?
The Fire Department is working on that right now and preparing to have a study done. I will say that Fire Impact Fees are not going to bring in the type of money that we would need for facility payments or bond payments. But on the other hand, in 2018, when the Fire Chief was talking about going back out, the Public Safety Building over here, the bond for it will be matured. And so, basically, there would be about, what is it? 10 cents, I think, per thousand of AV that citizens would no longer have to be paying. So, more than likely, that would cover, or come close to covering, a facility bond for the Fire Department.
I think the Chief had something to add.
Just to give you an update on the Fire Impact Fee. About a week ago, I put out a request to numerous consultants through the MRSC site, asking if they had experience to email me. I got response back from two. And one of them that we got a response back is the same one that's working with us now on the Parks Impact Fee. So, it's my intent that within the next, I'm hoping 30 days or so, we'll be able to get some requests for proposals from both of them. And, and I told them that we really need to fast-track this process. So, I don't know if that scared some of them away, but I believe that even if we just had Randy Young, and he was the person moving forward, we would have a great consultant to move forward with this Fire Impact Fee. And I do agree with the Finance Director, it's not going to be the panacea that's going to solve all our financial facility problems, so. But it will add to it.
It's not a panacea, but it would contribute to
It would.
...those capital improvement costs.
Yes.
So, I'm, I'm glad to hear that that is moving forward, because the sooner that we can analyze and identify and articulate our needs and collect impact fees, the sooner we are collecting money and saving money for future capital improvements.
Yes.
So, I'm glad to hear that. Can Public Works, let's see, Director Lenhart, can we talk about those scenarios for the situation in, in the event that the bond, the bonds fail? I mean, what, what is described is a pretty dire scenario, where we are eliminating eight of our eight street operations staff, so eliminating all of our street operations staff.
Yes.
And it's a pretty dire situation. So, I was wondering if you could describe that, please?
Describe it in, in what fashion, Councilmember? I'm sorry.
Well, maybe members of the public haven't read the Agenda Bill.
So, in, in the event that the ballot measure fails, and there's no revenue identified by the Council, it would essentially mean the end of our street function, our street maintenance function. We have eight, eight employees, many of whom are here, in the street section that maintain the city streets. So, it goes to, you know, filling potholes, maintaining sidewalks, ensuring that all of our regulatory signs are, are in good working condition, and that they are protecting the, the, the community. And also, our street fund also is responsible for the administration and management of our, of our traffic signals and our streetlights. And those are functions that would remain. We would continue, essentially, the revenue that we would have remaining would fund our streetlights, our traffic signals, our, our required payment to the city for stormwater fees, and just some minor staffing, primarily to answer phone calls and respond. And we would propose a small, what we would call a liability fund, to be able to call in some contracted labor. We would also, the street division is, is essentially the Public Works Operations Section that does a lot of the work for community events, for example. It's the closest we have to a general fund section of our Public Works Operations. So, we can't use utility folks for a lot of the community events-type duties. So, Fourth of July Parade, the street section funds the, the Public Works effort to support the parade, for example. And other, other little maintenance items that come up along the way that don't have a real specific home, the street fund typically picks those up. So, it's, it's a variety of duties, but we would, with no new revenues at all, we really wouldn't be able to respond to any, any needs. And we, we get a lot of calls for, for street things. With replacement revenues consistent with a $20 car tab fee, we could retain, we believe, five of those employees. We would still have to eliminate some of our, of our services. And it would still mean reductions in things such as snowplow and, and ice, de-icing efforts would also mean that we become much more complaint-based than we are currently. And we can only respond to the, the high liability items.
And when we talk about, if the bond doesn't pass, that these positions would have to be eliminated strictly from the, the Public Works staff, the street staff. But could positions elsewhere in the city be eliminated, such that we could retain our street staff or some of our streets staff? Is it a given that the reductions have to come from Public Works?
That's a Council decision. The thought from the staff side is that by going to the voters to ask them for funding specifically for street operations, the, the city is saying that the, the trade-off, if, if that's not funded, then the, the reductions in service will be street-related. So, as much as I hate to say it, because I, I would, I would love to hear of a, of another solution to keep the street section going, I, I don't know if that's an appropriate response, or if that would be my, my recommended response.
Thanks. That's my questions for now, but I do have some comments at the end of the questions.
Okay. Who would like to go next? Nobody. Okay, Councilmember McNeil.
We'll share. Thank you. So, I wanted to just ask, how did we get where we are today?
Tim, I'm in initiatives, tax-limiting initiatives. Basically, the tabs going away. Those, those monies went straight into the street fund. The street fund and the general fund are two separate funds. Government accounting is fund accounting, so things are separated. So, those were restricted monies strictly for the, the maintenance of roads. Once those monies went away, we had a couple other things. We, we were told that we couldn't charge a fee for streetlights anymore. We lost more money. That also went into the, to the street fund. So, between those, and then the adding of the storm drain, once the city decided to have a storm drain utility, we started collecting for surface water. That has been a huge hit to the street fund. So, it has been, you know, three or So it has been, you know, three or four major things that have happened within our street fund that have, just the magnitude is huge. I will say, we're not the only city out there. Other cities can't charge for a streetlight fee. Other cities got their tabs taken away. Our PSI, I don't remember the number for our streets, though. But all the other communities around us are seeing the same exact thing happening. That's why streets have just consistently got worse and worse, the maintenance and the improvement. The only way is to, again, as Councilmember Sandberg said, is to take the money from the general fund. But it has its own problems, too. So, I mean, it is a policy decision. It does come down to that. We can take money from the general fund, but it means taking away firemen, policemen, finance people, you know? It's the same thing. You really have to take away a service delivery item and not just people. Otherwise, you just evaporate the problem, push it off a little bit further, which is what we've done, and we've done a pretty good job of it, actually mandating that problem for as many years as we have. I think it's been 16 years without a dedicated fund of, a funding source within the street fund.
So are we going to be looking at funding sources? Is this funding source going to carry us through for the next 16 years? Or are we going to be right back here again?
No, I don't think so. I think the analysis that was put into this by the public work staff, it's been really well-done. I've looked it over. I look at their numbers long-term. I think they know where they need to have those numbers as far as their streets go. And I think that they know, at least for the next 10 years, that they would be in good shape. And the reason that I say 10 years is because they can only go ask for these monies for 10 years if they go to the public. So it's not permanent. So in 10 years, yeah, they would have to go back out then. Same as an EMS levy for six years.
And that 10-year period is also taking a look at the growth that we're going to have over the next 10 years?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Freed?
No. So I'm just curious, why, so I mean, I guess I understood why we originally had a separate street fund, because there, because you had to use the car tab money for streets and probably the signal money and everything else. So why do we continue to have a separate street fund now that those are all gone? Why isn't it just part of the regular general fund?
They do still get some motor vehicle fuel tax that is restricted. So we keep it in there because it's restricted funds. We might make sure they're used for the purpose that it's meant for. The truth is, the truth is that the general fund and the street fund truly are municipal services, all of them are, and the street fund really should be in the general fund if it wasn't for the fact that we have to keep restricted funds separate. But the difference is, when we look at the street fund, they have a specific service. If we look at the general fund, we can stop providing a service in the general fund and move those monies to the street fund. We can do that, but we have to identify where we're going to take them from. And if we're just going to move the money, there's nowhere within the budget that we can come up with the kind of money that we need in order to provide that level of service without reducing another service that the city is providing or reduce staff. So we're just, we're bringing this to the council as in, this is the problem and not changing the parameters or, let's do away with this service. We're bringing you the service that we literally have are having problems funding. But again, that's a council decision. That is a policy decision if you want to move monies from the general fund over.
And how would we go about making that decision? Because obviously, we can't do it tonight.
I would suggest doing it during the budget process or asking staff what other, what other programs that we could forego other than the street fund. Staff could come back with other ideas, but again, it's going to be the same, it's going to be the same problem because it's a lot of money. And so you're talking about the entire finance staff or the entire HR department. So the bottom line is, we don't have a dedicated source for our street fund, and we need to find one.
So my next question, I guess we can probably go off of each ballot measure. Well, let's take the fire capital ballot measure off the conversation of the other three. Are we talking about funding an existing level of service? Or are we talking about increasing our level of service in any of these levies?
Well, you talked about with respect to the, which one did you want to take off?
The fire capital. I guess I don't need to know the answer to that one about the level of service, but the level of service for maintaining our roads, so our
Right. You would be maintaining, and again, I would point you to that section which talks about the impact of a ballot failure. So if that, if that Public Works Maintenance and Ops, Maintenance and Ops measure failed, it would be a reduction, a drastic reduction in the level of service, right? And with a fire department measure or funds to fund their needs, what we're talking about, as the chief mentioned, is taking the fire department and making it a better, increasing its readiness. They maintain their standards now, national standards, but what we're looking at, what we're hoping to do is make them, bring them up, make them better, give them excess reserve capacity, provide them with physicals that they need to monitor their health over the years. But they, but I would assure you, and I think the chief would too, that they meet the standard right now. So there would be no loss of service without that funding, that set of funding.
Yeah. So I mean, I think a lot of people do have concern when they see a levy measure, like, oh, it's government getting larger. And what I'm trying to pull out of you guys is, what is this doing? Is this creating new services? Is it funding the existing services? Do we have a, you know, do we have a problem with our current funding of our existing services?
It's actually different for the streets. Prior to, it basically takes the fire department and puts their MNO, their overtime, back up to pre-recession levels. So it isn't increasing, it's just reinstating what they had prior to 2008. When you look at the facilities for the fire department, it is bringing them up to the standard they were when they were, you know, a remodel, basically, that is needed. We've known that we had a facility issue for fire. It was actually in the capital facilities plan up until they started talking about the, our, RFA. Thank you. So up until they started talking about the RFA, and then we were looking at, you know, all these different things that the fire service could do. And so it got removed or put into, you know, future years or something like that. But there always was a bond measure. Obviously, it wasn't secured, but the thought of going out to the community and asking for a bond measure for fire facilities, we knew that was something we could never do with operating monies that are coming in or the capital monies that really were coming in. That's usually what happens with the, like with the police department, with their facility. That's what, how it was built, was through a bond measure. Now, as far as the street fund goes, both of those measures actually bring the city back to a place, and it's what Councilmember McNeil was talking about, it brings us to a place where we are sustainable. And that is completely different than what we're talking about with the fire department. Sustainable. For the next 10 years, we would have a funding source to maintain our streets at a level that we want to see them at. So it is different between the fire and the street bonds.
And then the capital bonds for roads, is that the one you're talking about, sustainable versus the operating?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the, actually, it's the sales taxes, isn't it? It's the sales tax portion. And you can only go out and ask for 10 years, 10 years at a time. So I think it's in 10 years? Yeah, yeah.
So just to speak to if it would be an additional level of service. So the sales tax, the proposed sales tax measure for sidewalks and crosswalks would be a higher level of service than we're currently providing. We don't currently have an identified funding source for crosswalk construction, for example. And we have a very limited source of revenue for sidewalk construction. So those would be increases over what our current level of service is. And the pavement part of that as well would be to keep our pavement at a condition that it wouldn't cost us more to maintain in the future. We're trying to stay at the sweet spot of at least an 80 PCI for our arterials and collectors is what the proposal would be. So in partial, partially, the sales tax measure would be an increased level of service. The proposed street operations measure restores two programs that existed before the recession, which were an in-house patching program where we would do more paving of neighborhood streets. And it also would restore the sidewalk repair and replacement program that used to exist. It would be a slightly different program than what we currently, than what we had before, but that would really take a better, it would give us a better opportunity to actually maintain the sidewalk infrastructure that's out there, whether it's through grinding and actual replacement of sidewalk panels that can no longer be ground to eliminate hazards. And then we would also propose to add a small additional increment of striping of road, of pavement markings for an additional level of safety. Those additional programs are just a small portion of the 25 cents per hundred that were, or 25 cents per thousand that we've proposed for street operations. Does that help?
Yeah, that does help. So I have one last question. So I'm on page 40, 48. And so this has to do with the road preservation. If we continue, okay, so it costs the city $5 million for you to maintain that PCI. So in 30 years, if we continue what we're doing now, we'll have $198 million of cost, back cost in fixing the roads at that point? Is that in today's dollars or is that escalated to CPI for those 30 years?
So just to clarify, that's not if we continue doing what we're doing today. That's if we invested $9 million a year for the next decade to get us to an 80 citywide. And then we consistently invested an additional $5 million per year. So our proposal doesn't, isn't at that level, and our current investment isn't at that level. So the current level is, is the, continues to spend $1.2 million per year for 10 years, then brings the PCI, then bring the PCI up to 80, our 30-year cost increases to $230 million a year. And then if we wait 20 years to bring our, bring our pavement condition index up to 80, then the 30-year cost increases to $302 million a year.
So is that in back? I guess I'm not following you. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm trying to get back to, I didn't bring the study that told us this, so I'm trying to draw it out of all these numbers all piled up here. If we continue our current program of how we preserve our roads, how much backlog of maintenance costs or, you know, road preservation costs are we looking at in 30 years?
Basically, it's just what the city manager said. It's kicking, it's kicking the can down the road. If we, if we continue what we're doing, it's going to be, if we continue what we're doing now, it's going to have the 10-year number. I can't even see it. Yeah, well, if we continue what we're doing now, in 30 years, we'll have a $230 million backlog. And that is in today's, that is in today's numbers because nobody's done the inflation on, you know, what that would be in 2050.
And then, so if we pass this measure, or if we put this out to the voters and they pass it, how much money would we have still in our road preservation needs 30 years from now? How much backlog need would we have?
Don?
Yeah.
Bring out the engineer, the numbers.
Under our current program, I think we all established, we have a fairly large backlog in a 10 or 20 or 30-year horizon. Even with our current proposal, we're still building a backlog, which is going to be less. So our proposal we're putting out here to fund is essentially to bring up our arterials and collectors to a pretty good level, something that we can all drive on, emergency servicing, can get around on pretty easily. And we're basically going to slow the decline on our residential streets. Historically, being the last 10 years or so, capital spending on local streets has been pretty much nil. And what we're seeing is a pretty steep decline in those conditions. So what we're trying to do is basically, the ones that are still decent shape, keep them in decent shape. The ones that have already fallen apart, we don't have the funds to replace, but at least we won't add to that pile, you know, of very expensive to replace roads. So specific dollar numbers, it's a 30-year projection. I hope you understand it's not an exact science. Our actions and future councils and staff actions are going to change that number. This is our best guesses. If we do nothing or continue to spend what we're doing today, $300 million is the backlog we're going to see in about three decades. And we can, we can try and reduce that to $230 million, which is still a huge number, but $70 million that we can save and basically prevent deferred maintenance.
Okay. Those are, those are my questions. Thank you. Appreciate it. Do we have, I think we need to go through the group. Councilmember Freed, are you still not asking questions? Okay. So now we'll just go through a round of discussion, and we need to give them the staff direction on which, basically which ballot measures we're interested in moving forward. Councilmember Sandberg?
Motion to extend to 10:30.
Oh, good call. There's a motion to extend till 10:30 second by Deputy Mayor. I doubt our buttons work. No, she's saying no. So all those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Say aye, it's fine. Passes four to one with Councilmember Freed and the negative. Thank you for noticing that. We almost had time. So let's go through the group and talk about the different ballot measures. And I think it's important to comment about what the fire chief also asked us to comment on. So if you're not, if you're not interested in putting that ballot measure out there, I think we, we owe, I'd like to give him an answer at least, where we're at with finding funding for the fire department. Deputy Mayor?
So I took office four months ago, and now I'm repeating my metaphor from the last time we had this discussion. I'm in the emergency room, and there's a dead, nearly dead body on the floor, a couple of them. It's unfortunate that our previous audience was less, was not as concerned about losing eight employees. So I am for postponing the capital facilities on fire. I'm for finding a way to supplement the budget for fire outside of a ballot measure. I think if Snohomish County passes their ballot measure, we've got a little bit of help in the fire, for fire funding. I think fire impact fees may help. I think we have a proposal to spend some of our reserves. I think the larger question is what to do about streets. And I think the responsible thing to do is put the streets on, and I'm for only putting one ballot measure on. And given the sales tax proposal from Snohomish County, I don't want to, I'm not interested in a sales tax proposal, but I am interested in possibly merging sidewalks, maybe a reduction in our numbers for sidewalks, but I'm interested in merging some sidewalks into one ballot measure for property levy. That's where I stand.
And the maintenance operations ballot measure?
For fire?
No, for street
Oh, yeah. No, I want, I'm interested in putting the streets and road, maintenance and operations of roads together in one. And only one ballot measure.
Okay. Next, Councilmember? Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. Well, we've been presented with a rather dire budget situation, and I don't at all enjoy being in the position to pit firefighter training against public work jobs and drastic reductions in street level of service. against public work jobs and drastic reductions in street level of service. I think that's a really bad position to be in. I realize that we have lost some dedicated funding to our street funds. But we've also taken on a significant amount of debt in the city. And the elephant in the room is actually this room. One of the reasons why we are in this situation is because we are faced with paying an annual lease payment for this building of $3.4 million a year for the next 24 years. And that's money that we could be spending on these projects. But instead, we're going out and asking the voters for that. And for that, I'm, I'm really disappointed because I think what we're seeing is, is the consequence of this aggressive infrastructure program where with no vote of the people, we engaged in a lot of debt for the city, including the city hall. And as a result, we're seeing the budget consequences now. And so we're going to have to deal with that. So I, I appreciate the fire chief in providing options to delay the request for a capital facilities, bond request for fire station improvement. I do support finding whatever those excess revenue sources are in our budget to fund his request above the $170,000 that is presented in this agenda bill. His request was $600,000. So there's definitely a gap between $170,000 and $600,000. I think we need to investigate how much of that reserve we can allocate towards fire services. And his point is well-taken that we need, we need to have a long-range plan. We need to know if this is something that is just going to be for the 17, 18 budget or long-term. I have heard some feedback from the community regarding an expensive sidewalk program. And so I think it's important, I agree with an approach that Deputy Mayor Dewar has discussed, which is merging operations with the element of street preservation so that we can maintain our pavement condition index at 80. And I think as a part of this budget process, we also need to be thinking about that $230 million can that's getting kicked down the road for streets. We can't just think about it in a two-year or a 10-year horizon. We need to be thinking about a plan for that now as well. Thanks.
Okay. Who would like to go next? Councilmember McNeil.
To me, budgeting is a very important thing. And when I take a look at where we are today, I echo what Councilmember Sandberg said. And I'm a little disappointed that it came to this. But I think it's very important that we all realize that we do need to maintain our streets. We need to maintain safety for our citizens and make sure that not only the citizens, but the kids and everybody has the safest of schools, the sidewalks and crosswalks that are necessary. At the same time, we need to make sure that our fire department has the proper training that they need to make sure that they're staying safe in what they do on a day-to-day basis, protecting the citizens. And if the fire trucks can't get to the sites because they don't have the streets that are paved properly or things that are deteriorating, it makes it tough. So I am very supportive of making sure we put something forward on the operations for public works. At the same time, I'm very supportive of the fire department and making sure they're fully funded because it takes both of them to help us in the city and the citizens are going to need both. I think it's the citizens' responsibility to make that decision. We could sit up here and speculate what the community wants. But until we hear what the community wants by them voting on something, we're still speculating. So in my opinion, I, you know, I am supportive of putting forward the operations for the public works and as well as the, the full, I want to fully fund the fire department, what they need for the training for the firefighters to make sure that we're, we're keeping them safe as well.
So just to make sure, so you're, you're not supportive of moving forward any pavement preservation, sidewalk and crosswalks program? You just want to do street operations and fire and operations and maintenance?
Well, to be clear, I'd prefer to put them all forward. But if I have to make a choice, operations, I think if we have the staff, there's things that we can do internally with the, the guys to do that work. So I, I think I have to support that first. I'd, I'd want to put them all forward, but I think that we'd have failure if we did so.
Okay. Councilmember Freed?
You said, you can ask this, I'll ask the question of the mayor who can ask it to you. But you said fully fund the fire department. Are you saying fire facilities improvements as well or no? No. Okay. My concern is I think we still need a south fire station. We've heard it for a while. We see a nice police station across the street. We have new public work facility. And I think that we still need a fire facility to the south end of the city. I don't hear support from council for that. And obviously, two of our firemen who sit on this council aren't here this evening, unfortunately, to speak to it. So at this point, the four of you will make the decision which one go forward. So that's the end of my comments.
So no decision is made tonight about which ones go forward. We're just giving directions to staff. So, you know, I've, I have wanted to put the pavement preservation, well, sidewalks and crosswalks is kind of a newer thing. But the pavement preservation piece, I've wanted to put that in front of the public's eye for the last four years because I keep hearing about things like $300,000, $300 million of backlog. And it's just, we have to at least ask if we know that there's a $300 million train coming that's going to cost us a lot of, of the taxpayers a lot of money. They at least should be aware of the situation. The only way to do that is to put a ballot measure out there. So I do support that. I also support the street, street operations, you know, to take a, take a, a service of the city from eight FTEs down to zero is unbelievable. I mean, so we, our existing services would go from where they are right now to zero if we don't do something. And to me, we have to do that. It's combining them, however, you know, we can, I guess we can massage how we want to deal with the concerns about just putting one ballot measure out there. Or maybe we look at a package of a transportation benefit district plus doing a ballot measure. You know, there's, there's different ways to kind of look at this thing. And if we just want one ballot measure, I think I could be comfortable with that. I'm okay with, with it being two. I, I do worry about even just two on the ballot passing. The fire and operations, fire and operations and maintenance. You know, I always looked at that and thought, well, can we just figure out a way to fund that? And I, and I think that not putting that out there now, but making a promise that we will fund that is a priority to me. I don't want to put it out to the public, but I, for, to ask for a tax increase. But through this budgeting process, I, I hope that it's a priority of this council. The, the two council, two council members that aren't here, I'm sure would support that, that we need to look under every single rock and nook and cranny to figure out how we can get the money back into the fire service. We, you know, the, the fire department essentially wanted to leave the city so that it had its own funding source. And I think we need, we have a responsibility to respond to that and make sure that they have, you know, what, what they need. And, and then that brings me to the fire facilities. From what I understand, the, the chief has said that we need a little more time to figure out, you know, what our impact, you know, what can the impact fees help with? What is the real level of, of need? Do we need a south fire station? I think those things really need to be kind of figured out before we put it out to the public and ask them for a, a fire capital levy. So, or property tax levy. So that's my opinion. So, okay, so that's the end of that, right? And the next item on our agenda is council committee, chair?
I want to thank all you guys for coming in and sitting through the council meeting. I hope to see more of you guys.
So council committee reports. I believe we had two different council members that wanted to bring up council committee reports. Councilmember McNeil.
Yeah, so I passed out earlier a SCA pick potential policy position for tomorrow night's meeting. And I wanted to get direction from council on our position for it. So has everybody had an opportunity to read it?
Maybe everybody's taking an opportunity to read it here. Give a minute.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So it says that, so we're, the policy position, the first bullet is that the SCA pick group is going to endorse a 25-year financial package to ensure a complete build-out of the light rail spine as well as providing critical east-west connections throughout the region and north-south service on the east side. I'm just curious if there was any insight to that conversation. I mean, there, there is no north-south light rail spine for the east side. And as far as I know, the light rail projects are to Redmond and to Issaquah. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so probably those members of the pick were most supportive of that. And yet we heard tonight that the cost per mile of light rail is 300 million, 190 million to 300 million versus 20 million for bus rapid transit. So I guess I have a hard time embracing the statement that we are wanting to, we are supporting the complete build-out of light rail spine. Because what that means is that communities, many of the communities on the east side continue to pay into a system that we don't benefit from, just like we did in sound transit and sound transit, too.
Okay, so you're not supportive of that bullet? What about the other bullets?
I think the other bullets are, are, I could, I can support the other bullets.
Okay. Does any other council member have any comments? And we need to have an idea whether we support this letter or not. Do you know, is it a contentious issue, Monks' pick? Or is this kind of a, one of those slam dunk things in the meeting, but you just wanted to check with us?
Yeah, I'm just checking with you. Every, almost all jurisdictions are definitely supportive of it, yeah.
Anybody else have any opinion on this letter?
Still reading it.
Are we done, Reed? Okay, go ahead.
I support the last four bullets, not the first two.
Okay.
Which I think at least the first one coincides with the council member Sandberg. I don't know with the second. Did you speak to that?
I, I didn't speak to that, but I know that our north-end partners are very interested in a light rail system on 522, and they're supporting that study. So I don't want to offend our north-end partners. I don't really want to offend our other east-end partners either. But I think I just wanted to express my concern, the cost of light rail versus bus rapid transit.
Deputy Mayor, do you have anything to say about the letter? Do you support it or not, or?
I understand Councilmember Sandberg's concerns. But unless we're, we start picking that first sentence apart, I don't know how to. I mean, I support north-south service on the east side. Unless we want to pick out the light rail spine, I'm okay with the rest of the letter.
I'm okay with the letter.
Okay, so.
Does that give you the direction you need?
I've seen a majority of support for the letter in general. And what I will do in the, in the meeting is actually bring up some of the opposition to bullet point one by Councilmember Sandberg and Councilmember Freed. But in general, say that we're in support of it.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
So now, oh wait, is there any other committee reports? I thought there was two.
I already spoke.
Deputy, you already spoke to it, okay. So we're going to go into executive session for litigation, potential litigation matters and personnel matters for 15 minutes. We don't anticipate to come back to the dais, so we'll be adjourned after the executive session.